Your Honor, we have 12 present in civic clerk and 12 present via Zoom or in person.
Very good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have an invocation listed here for a member, so please just join me in a moment of silence and, given the week that we're in, maybe contemplate our veterans who have served this country. Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes from the November 2, 2021 Common Council meeting. It was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any changes? None? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. The agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any changes? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Report by the mayor. Just keep my comments to the budget. Really appreciative to all of our department heads, but especially Director Ellenbecker and Assistant Director Pam Manley for all the work that they put into this budget, rolling everything up. There's the added complexity, although welcomed, complexity of the ARPA resources this budget year. So it was not an easy task, never is, but really appreciate all the time and energy spent into pulling this together. Also want to thank Alder Dorf, who's of course the Chair of our Finance Committee, Alder Galvin, Chair of the Personnel Committee, and our members, Alder Johnson and Corpus Dax, for all their work at the committee level to bring us to this station here. I know we're going to have a good discussion on the budget that's in front of you. Of course, I'm in favor of it. I've presented it and, you know, we've had some changes made at the committee level, which I think were wise and appropriate. So looking forward to a good discussion tonight, but I think we've made some real progress from a fiscal point of view over the last couple of years as a result of some difficult choices made here. But as a result of that, I think it's put us on some strong footing and what we have tonight is, you know, a budget that really focuses on the essentials and brings us forward with a very small mill rate increase. So again, asking for your support on that this evening. And with that, we'll move along to announcements. Alder Gerlach.
My very first announcement ever. I want to tell you we have a victory in District 3. All of the big old dead ash trees along the southwest corner of Easttown Mall have been safely cut down and removed. There were 18 of them. And the fence behind the vacant Shopko building is about half finished, the brand-new fence, and people are sleeping soundly now and not as nervous. I want to thank Leah Bonet of Pfefferly Management for making that happen and I want to thank Sky Green Bay, the owner of the Shopko property, for paying that big bill to make that happen. I want to thank the constituents who stuck with me and helped me make a solution out of a problem. It's really moving along and I'm very proud.
Great. Thank you, Alder. Other announcements from council? Not seeing any. We will move along to appointments. We have one new appointment here, appointment of an interim city attorney, Joanne Bungert. Some sad news, obviously, in the sense that Vanessa is leaving us. It leaves a major void for us in the Law Department and very appreciative of all her work over the years, serving the citizens and the government of Green Bay here. But with Joanne, I think we have somebody who's very well seasoned and experienced. I think many of you have worked with her, certainly on the Protection and Policy Committee and elsewhere. So that's the appointment that we have in front of you this evening. Maybe just to talk about the process in terms of identifying a long-term replacement for our city attorney, if Director Folds might be able to chime in before we act on this.
Yeah, sure. So right now, we're appointing an interim city attorney. And based on Wisconsin statutes, you know, we need to have a city attorney present for the city of Green Bay and municipalities like the city. So that's what we're doing tonight, is making sure that that statutory required position is being filled. And then going forward, we have posted already the job posting for the city attorney. I think it's posted either this Monday or maybe last Monday. And we're doing an internal recruitment and an external recruitment. And I guess what we'll do typically is we'll have two rounds of interviews. We'll have input from the council, input from staff and other directors. And I think typically, we end with a meeting with the mayor to look at the final candidates. And I don't know if we'll have a whole lot of public input, but I do know that there might be some interested attorneys or maybe former judges in the area who might be able to give input on what we're looking for for a city attorney. So that's really the process that we're looking for. And then after that, once the mayor and the interview panel selects the final candidate, that position will be appointed by the mayor and for the confirmation of the common council.
Great. Thank you, Director Folds. Any questions or comments? Alder Dorf makes a motion to approve the appointment, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion or questions? Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just concur with Attorney Bungert coming on board. Like I said, she's worked with us very well on protection and policy amongst other things and always found her to be very professional, very helpful, and always there if I had questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Alder. Any other questions or comments? Any final thoughts? Attorney Chavez?
I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity to serve this community. It's really been our home for the last five years and it was not an easy decision to uproot our family and leave. But as I indicated to you all in our letter notifying you that we would be leaving, this is exclusively based on the needs of our family. We do have very small children now and this allows us to go home to my husband's family. And if not for that, we would not be leaving Green Bay. We've really truly come to love this community and we wish you all the best. And I hope that you guys will always consider us part of the Green Bay family because this is really where we were wanting to be. So thank you very much for putting your faith in me for the last five years, giving me the opportunity to work here. And you guys have a wonderful department, Law Department team. I have no concerns whatsoever that Dran's going to do an amazing job. She's been wonderful to work with for the past five years and she's going to continue to do great things. So I'm really excited for you, Joanne. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Vanessa. If you'd all join me, thank you, Vanessa, for her service. All right, seeing no other comments, I think we need a board vote on this, so we will do that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Did you say use the board? You cut out there.
I did, yes.
Okay, here we go. Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
Alder Stoyer is yes.
Thank you. And Alder Johnson? Thank you.
Alder Johnson is yes.
Yes, thank you so much. And here is the displayed vote. Oh, I'm sorry. That is the wrong thing. So sorry.
No problem.
There.
And that is unanimous, 12-0. Congratulations, Attorney Bungert. Onto public hearing. So this is a public hearing of the 2022 proposed City of Green Bay budget. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to our budget? Anyone here in person or online who'd like to speak to our budget? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the budget? All right, let the record reflect there is no one present to speak on the city budget. Of course, we did have the opportunity at a couple of town hall meetings. So a number of citizens joined us for those discussions and very appreciative of the input that we heard at that stage. Now we move along to the report of the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee meeting for November 3, 2021. I am planning, like I did last year, counsel, to treat this like a normal report. So I'm just asking you to, at this stage, pull the items that you would like to discuss separately. And I will be sure to move very slowly through this to make sure we pulled everything. We can also, of course, you know, reconsider if you've forgotten to pull an item. But just given the fact that you'd spent four hours going through this document at the committee level, you know, I thought this would be the most efficient way to handle things. So with that, motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, that was seconded by Alder Galvin. And now I'll ask for items to be handled separately.
Item 5?
Item 5. Item 5?
Mr. Mayor, the park's budget. I apologize.
The park's budget, you said, Alder?
Yeah, I'm looking for the number.
Number 17.
All right, thanks.
You bet. And 31.
And administrative also, if that wasn't pulled.
Okay, we've got 16 and then administrative is 8. Any others?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, before you go on,
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I have 5, 17, 31, 8, and 16 thus far. Is that correct?
Yes, I'll read them in order, 5, 8, 16, 17, and 31.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to add 12 to that if I could.
12.
And city council?
6. Any others? All right. Hearing on others, all in favor of approving that report, with the exception of the items to be handled separately, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that report has been approved with the exception of those items. The first item is item 5. Given discussions with members of council, I think it might be best to handle that last, just given the fact that we might be able to adjust the number of, or the ARPA dollar number based on actions that we take on our budget. If there isn't any objection to that, we will handle that last. Okay, seeing none, we will move along to item 6. That is the Common Council budget. I think that was pulled by Alder Weary.
Yes, thank you. The only time we can address wages to, you know, for elected people is before the next election, so this wouldn't apply to us. It'd be whoever comes into office next. Appreciate, Diana Ellenbecker, you sending me the information. The last time we had an increase was 2018. And so to set, you know, set it for the next two years, I would propose a 2%. I asked what the lowest rate was of anybody in the city and apparently that was 2%. I would make a motion to increase the city council's salary 2% for each of the next two years.
Alder, I just want to stop. Alder Weary, I gave you bad information. It was 2008 was the last time there was an increase. That should have been a zero. So it's been 2008 since there's been a change or an increase. That was my mistake.
That was actually on my head that start here because I don't remember. I don't remember that. So it's been 13 years. I think a modest 2% for each of the next two years is certainly not out of line and is, you know, matching up with the lowest increase of anybody in the city. And it probably adds up, you probably have to have the number, I would assume, but...
Yes, Director Ellenbecker, do you have the number? Otherwise, I can give you a few moments.
The information that I sent to Alder Weary was 2% increase would come out to annually $198 per alder. Since this would be a prorated starting probably mid-April, we would be looking at $140 per alder or $1,680 increase in the 2022 budget. Full-year impact would be about 23, $2,376 in future years. So 2022 budget increase would be 1,680 to add a 2% starting in April.
So for the 56? Oh, that's right, it's one year. Never mind. We really would just deal with this year's budget, so 1680, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, Alder Weary makes a motion to increase the city council budget by $1,680. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Stoyer. Some discussion here, I think. Alder Scannell was first, then Alder Dorf.
My question kind of got answered when I entered this discussion there. It's only 2% for the term, not for each year.
Director Ellenbecker, is that 2%?
Actually, that would have to be clarified by the council, but at this point, all it built in was an increase in 2022 budget, keeping it then flat for future years. Yes, you would have to vote whether or not you wanted an increase on an annual basis or if it would be just for one 2% increase.
Got it. So 1680 is for that one 2%.
I would like to make it for each year, 2% for each year. The alder would care to amend, or I can amend it?
Yeah, no, I agree to that. That's fine.
Okay.
Then I make a motion to amend it, that the raise is each year.
Make the, Alder Scannell makes a motion to increase the salaries for alders by 2% each year in 2021 and 2022. That amendment was seconded by Alder Dorf. Discussion on the amendment? Alder Dorf?
I just wanted to mention that this is what the school board did a few years ago. They, the school board salaries also had not been raised for years and years and years. And what they've done is, instead of just raising it by an amount, they've tied it into the percent that when they settle the contracts with the teachers and the administration, that that percent is what the alders would get. So I like that Alder Weary looked at the percent that, the lowest percent that the, you know, persons got on in city staff. And I think that's a really nice idea. I wouldn't have thought of that. But that is exactly what the school board members are also doing and have been doing for the last few years.
Any additional comments on that? All right, seeing none. All in favor of that amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Entertained a motion on that item as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended made by Alder Scannell, by Alder Weary. Any discussion on that? Director Ellenbecker, do you have an updated number for us?
Gaining to common council or the bottom line?
For the common, for this, this motion.
Oh.
2% in each year.
The impact for 2022 budget would be just 1,680. I did not calculate the 2% for 2023.
That's fine. So with that, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it and that, that item has been approved. Onto number 8, Administrative Services budget. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell,
seconded.
Seconded by Alder Dorf. And that item was pulled by?
That was me.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Sorry, I lost my page. I did have a question under the city clerk's office.
Go ahead.
Under the, and I'm losing my page here, not seasonal, but the, there's four positions. I was wondering what that, what those were.
Okay, we'll go to Director Ellenbecker or, and/or the city clerk?
Sure. I can start and then we'll let the clerk step in. So yes, within the clerk's office, we have five full-time staff. We have clerk, you have the deputy clerk, you have two administrative clerks, and then you have one administrative clerk, too. So those are the full five FTEs in that department. This would be on page 33 of the paper copy.
There you go. Okay, so the four temporary help seasonal?
The four temporary help seasonal is for tax collection.
That is correct.
Tax collection?
Correct. So as you remember, tax collection was moved from the county to the city for the first installment. And so we have, we have in our budget for those two months, January, sorry, December and January, and one week in February for people helping in the clerk's office. That's a special line item, a special project number for that tax collection, temporary help.
Gotcha. Okay, appreciate it. So nowhere in here is budgeted for voter navigators?
That is correct because dependent. I would love to have voter navigators again, but that's a discussion for another year.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, Celeste.
You're welcome, Alder.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf and then Alder Burnett?
Apparently, on a somewhat popular or perhaps not popular radio show this morning, it was announced that we were hiring four voter navigators. So I'm certain that that's probably where these questions are coming up. And I didn't see that in the budget either, but there's many times, many errors on that particular show. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you. I have received four calls in regards to voter navigator positions. So in the time that I had, my lunch break, I kind of looked at the past budgets. First time the word voter navigator appeared in a city budget, as far as I could tell, was the 2021 budget, so the budget year that we're in. We did use the voter navigator position in 2020 and that was grant-funded from the CTCL grant. So if you look at the difference year after year for our budget when it comes to elections, obviously, even year budget years, there's an increase and that's because we have the fall elections. If you look at the budget from a couple of years ago, we saw a noticeable increase in the amount of money going budgeted towards the clerk's office. But I think that that could be traced back to the fact that we, at that time, the 2019 budget, I believe, we were starting to accept the tax payments at City Hall compared to what the county had done. So one thing I would recommend, if the voter navigator, keep in mind, I know Alder Dorf mentioned the radio show host, but there are, I would assume, some people in the community that are concerned about the appearance of voter navigators being hired, whether it be by city funds or grant funds, which, you know, could still be a possibility this coming year. Who knows where the paths go? But on page 24 of the budget book, I would just simply recommend crossing off the word voter, the words voter navigator and just remove all doubt that we won't have voter navigators in the city of Green Bay in 2022. So I guess I would, I don't know if that's appropriate because it's not a fiscal item, but I would just make a motion to cross off the term voter navigators on page 24 of the budget.
Yes, we can absolutely update that. They are, there are no voter navigators built into the 2022 budget.
And, Your Honor, may I also add something?
Yeah, Clerk Jeffries, go ahead.
Thank you very much. The voter navigators are grant-dependent, so they did not appear for the city's budget. So no taxpayer funds paid for voter navigators, just to be clear.
Right, yeah, and thank you for that. And I'm sorry, Mayor, and I'm going to interrupt, but thank you for that. That was my understanding as well. Clerk Jeffries, could you just assure us that, that there have been no conversations or any prospects into securing grant funds for voter navigators for the fall 2022 elections?
I have had no conversations about securing grant funds to hire voter navigators. However, I think the conversation of whether we have voter navigators is something that really is a personnel matter at this point because we don't, we don't have any prospect of having grant funds to fund that type of position.
If we did secure grant funds, that would require the clerk's office, HR, administration to come before the city council to approve the grant funds and the classification of those positions. So we basically would have another vote at that time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. No other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So we did have a motion, but no second. Is that just, I guess we'll pause and either ask Attorney Chavez or Attorney Bungert if that's an appropriate motion, given that it's not really a fiscal item before us here?
I guess I'm a little confused with the, the item, what the motion would be.
Sorry to interrupt. I guess, can we, let me know, what page are we looking at here? Like where, because that might be helpful.
I can let you know in the paper copy, on the org chart, on page 24, paper copy, in the box, clerk's box, it still says seasonal salaries. And then we have lumped together, we have seasonal workers, poll worker, voting machine mechanics, and we had the word voter navigators in there. However, there is not, when the budget was built, there are no voter navigators in this budget. But on the org chart, there's still with a potential of, you know, in the seasonal salary. Let me go back. It's on electronic page. If you're looking at the packet, it is on electronic page 79. It's on, it's only on the org chart. It is not built into the budget.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. I guess my thought would be, we do, or the council does approve the organizational charts. So maybe that's the motion to amend the organizational chart, to not have that. If that's the motion the council wants to do.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, can I talk, Mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if that's your motion.
Yes, sir. That would be great. I would like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Update the org chart on page 24 to remove voter navigators from the city budget and the organizational chart.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded by Alder Gerlach. Alder Dorf on that motion?
I would be very much against eliminating the voter navigator position, whether we have them in the budget or not this year. I would be against eliminating them from the org chart of seasonal workers. They provided a fabulous service to our community. They helped people understand how to vote at a poll or how to vote by mail or, they had a number of jobs that were overseen by the Elections Committee. It was the Ad hoc Elections Committee that came up with the idea to, you know, approve the voter navigators. So I don't think we need to throw out the voter navigators from the org chart unless we just want to turn around and put them back in again. And we might need voter navigators. They were a very good help for the voting and for the polls. So I would be just letting you know that I am against the motion to eliminate them from the org chart. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional discussion on that item? Alder Scannell?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I mean, as far as, there's really no problem to put them back in if they're going to be part of the budget. So if an alder feels to take them out is appropriate since they're not in the budget, I guess I really don't, I'm not really going to fight that. I think that's a, you know, if that makes some alders better, feel better about the budget, that's fine, until the battle will come if we ever going to budget for them and we take up that sword when that time comes. So I, I'll support the motion.
Thanks, Alder. Additional discussion? Start for a second time, Alder Dorf?
The clarification is, they're not taking them out of the budget. They're taking them out of the org chart. We are going to have elections that will be coming up. And we may decide under seasonal worker salaries that this would be an appropriate position to hire. Even though it's not specified, it is in the org chart. So we're, we're taking away opportunity by taking it out of the org chart for the 2022 elections to have them.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell for a second time?
Yeah, but as I understand it, we can put them right back in, right? So that's, it's, it's not like they disappear. It's like if we want to, if we want them and we want to budget for them, we put them back in the org chart and we put the budget line, you know, how much we're going to pay and, and then we duke it out there. So, you know, I, I don't think, you know, we all are aware of the position. We all are aware of what they do. And some of us favor it, some of us don't. So for now, I see this as a non-issue and I'm not going to, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. So I'm going to shut up.
We've already spent too much time on it, I would suggest, since it's a non-issue and it's, you know, not in our budget. But any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And now we are on to HR budget. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Yes. Yes, there was a motion to approve right off the bat, but not as...
But did we vote on it?
Good question. No, we will go back to administrative services. We did have a motion and a second. I guess I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
The ayes have it. That item has been approved as amended onto the HR budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. And the item was pulled by Alder Burnett.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Kind of have given a lot of thought to the reclassification of the HR director position to operations director or chief of operations, whatever the title would be. It's not that I'm against the idea. I'm just a little uncomfortable because it, there was some conversation around possibly revising the chief of staff or redirecting or reassigning some of that person's duties and also potentially then affecting the other position in the mayor's office. So I guess what I would make a motion would be to make that change effective June 1st. That gives us enough time to, the mayor's office and the HR department to adjust any changes to the chief of staff position to reassign some of the duties that the chief of operations position would then take over. So again, I'm not opposed to the idea, Mayor. It's your office. You should be able to manage it the way that you think. I just would feel comfortable for them to be together. And by extending this to June 1st, that will give you enough time to readjust and have the council approve any changes to the chief of staff job description. So I would make a motion to that effect.
Motion has been made to delay the effective date of the reclassification of the HR director to chief of operations from January 1 to June 1. That motion was made by Alder Burnett. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Weary. Just briefly, since it's, you know, sort of related to my office, or at least the comments were related to my office. I appreciate, you know, the argument that Alder Burnett is offering. But I sincerely believe that having a chief of operations is to the benefit of this organization. Chief of staff is really, you know, all duties as assigned by the mayor. It is a little bit of a jack of all trades, and I think it's, it's very dependent on, on who the, who the mayor is, you know, what their responsibilities are. I think it's really clear, however, though, the creation of this director of operations position will be of real benefit to the organization and as a result to the community and the taxpayer. I've said this previously, but it's something that I observed as an outsider to the city and somebody who is running for this office. I suggested in my platform that we should have in the city of Green Bay a sort of someone on the COO level, which is essentially what we're creating here, a first among equals among our department heads. Somebody who can help me set the strategic direction of our city as an organization. It's a, it's a very complicated, complex organization. Nearly 900 employees, 100-plus million dollar annual budget, as you all, and every other community of our size in the state and some smaller have this sort of position, either, you know, an operations director or a city administrator. So to me, the benefits are clear, not to, to me as an individual, but to our organization. And so just feel strongly that I think it would be a benefit to implement this reclassification as soon as possible, which would be January 1st. So with that, Alder Dorf also had some comments.
I have a lot of confidence in the mayor's ability between now and January 1st to figure out exactly how he wants these jobs to function. Because I think that this has been a long time in coming. I think he's already got ideas. I think, again, we need to let the mayor manage his own office and his own operations. And I think he's very capable of doing that. So I would be opposed to postponing this until June 1st. I would like to see it stay at January 1st. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett for a second time?
Yeah, Alder Dorf, I don't disagree with that. Thank you for explaining that, Mayor. The question, though, is for me, you know, we'll have a chief of staff, which, you know, in my opinion, the title chief of staff implies that that is the mayor's voice and the chief of the, the city department. That positions the go-to between the public and the mayor's office. At least that's the way my understanding of chief of staffs have been in my time in city of Green Bay government. We used to call them different names through my years. Serving with Mayor Schmidt, it was a different name at different times. And then when I was on the county board, it was different titles. And, and so the chief of staff title and chief of opinion, this is just my opinion, it implies that two people are doing the same. So maybe the chief of staff position needs to be adjusted. I know the mayor had mentioned that at joint finance and personnel. And that just gives a little more time to restructure, reclassify job descriptions to fit the mayor's expectations and demands within his office. So that's all. It's absolutely nothing personal. It just seems to me the titles imply two people doing the same jobs. Maybe that's something I need to get over in my head, but I, I just, it just seems confusing to me. Chief of operations, chief of staff, seems like two same positions doing very similar duties. And I mean that with all due respect to the mayor and Mr. Faltz. That's just why, the way that I would like to do this is to then reclassify the position, change the title if needed. And that gives us like four or five months to do it, taking into effect in June. So that's all say to the matter. Those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other? Alder Johnson and then Alder Gerlach?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the joint finance and personnel committee, I too brought up the question of the, I mean, cross-departmental facilitation. Typically, from my experience, that is the responsibility of a chief of staff. And the mayor gave us a, a good explanation, I think, at that meeting in terms of what he would like to see that existing position grow into. You know, at the end of the day, when we're talking about the fiscal impact of this reclassification, quite frankly, it's, it's relatively negligible. And so to, to that point, I think I'm, I'm more than comfortable supporting the fiscal impact as of January 1st. However, one of the things that would still just strike me as odd is having your chief of operations in charge of the human resources department as opposed to operating out of the administrative budget area and, and being sort of that, that direct report to the mayor, which of course they are right now, you know. But I don't know, Mayor, if you've got any additional thoughts on that? You know, having them, again, sort of, sort of be the, the part of your budget, your team as opposed to, you know, the oversight level of human resources. And perhaps if you have any additional insight as well, how much human resources with this reclassification? How much human resources work are they doing versus this new operational type of responsibility?
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. I invite Director Faltz to weigh in on, in terms of what, you know, some of those responsibilities that he'll be carrying forward with. But in terms of, you know, doing a, a larger reorganization, that absolutely was, was contemplated by me. But I felt like this was, you know, the, the most effective, most expeditious, most cost-effective way to move forward with the organizational change. And, but we'll, you know, we'll learn from it, obviously, to see if HR is the best place for this, this type of role to stay permanently. But right now, I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with that department kind of being the home for this position for the time being.
Could Director Faltz perhaps just, whether it's Director Faltz or yourself, that could speak to, again, how much, how much work will be performed in, I guess, in the name of human resources department versus operations-related activities?
Absolutely. Director Faltz?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have any percentages in my mind because I, I think the way I have viewed human resources the past four years is that, you know, it's kind of intertwined with all the departments already, and we're already working to try and collaborate. So it's kind of hard for me to separate what is HR versus operations. But what I'll say is, part of the restructuring is we're promoting our HR operations manager to more responsibilities and be more of like an assistant director. So she's going to be the HR manager and is going to be taking on more of the HR department responsibilities. And I, I don't think it's, it's too uncommon to have a role like this oversee some type of department. I think the city of Oshkosh has an assistant city manager that also oversees human resources, and it's a very similar role to what we have right here. And I think sometimes, too, like a city administrator might have like a, a finance background that oversees the finance department too and things like that. So I don't think it's too uncommon to have this position also oversee a department and have that assistant director, you know, maybe share the bulk, the HR responsibilities, and then also some of the responsibilities for the chief of operations be more global with the, with the organization. So I don't have a definitive percentage, but I, you know, it'll be more than what I'm doing right now, I guess.
Okay. And then one more question, Mayor?
Yeah.
I mean, since these, these positions are, you know, kind of being brought up in the same discussion, and, and again, this was discussed at the committee level, which was the, the potential change in the future of responsibilities related to our, our current chief of staff role. One of the things I had brought up at that time is I felt this is long overdue for the city of Green Bay is having somebody in charge of communications, internal, external. I think that it's a really necessary function that, that right now we're kind of, we're missing. And so during that meeting, Mayor, you'd brought up that, that might be the direction that you're looking for in that position. Could you perhaps speak to that a little bit? And then maybe when we could potentially see a recommendation for a change on that front?
Yeah, so it's certainly, you know, been the focus of my, my chief's current work is on, on external relations, on policy development to some extent. Ahmad currently oversees the, the PR team, the public relations team for the city of Green Bay, which is a cross-departmental group of individuals that, that handle, you know, some level of public outreaches or social media for individual departments. So he convenes that group every week to discuss, you know, different strategies and different ideas that individuals have to communicate out to the public. And so, you know, this, the, the creation of the chief of operations role will allow, I think, the chief of staff to, to focus more singularly on those sorts of issues and ideas. And so I can certainly commit to bringing forward, you know, a rewrite of the job description for chief of staff within the next year. You know, I, I don't know that that requires a motion, but I can certainly commit to, to doing that.
Yeah, and I, I'm not necessarily looking for a motion on that so much as to get your feedback on when that might be expected, given some of the, the concerns perhaps that were shared within the motion about having duplicative positions.
Yep, absolutely. Any other comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying, and just to recap, this would be, the motion is by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Weary, to delay the effective date of the reclassification and the creation of the director of operations role until June 1st. All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The nays have it, and that motion fails. We do have a motion and a second to approve the HR budget. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
The ayes have it. The HR budget is approved. To item 16, that's to approve DPW budget, engineering operations, traffic and equipment replacement budgets as well. And I believe that was pulled by Alder Storey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for Director Gner. I've had a chance to talk to him on a few things, but I just wanted to clarify or just have him clarify that, you know, DPW was adding a GIS person to the table of organization. You know, why is this needed? I've talked to him about it, but I'd like him to just share with council and such.
You've had Director Gner.
Certainly. Thank you, Alder Storey. The GIS position that we currently have shown in the table of organization is listed as a lead worker. Whether this ends up being a lead worker, a GIS analyst to, a senior GIS analyst, or some other position is yet to be determined. We discussed this at the HR or the Joint Personnel Finance Committee meeting last week. We have not had any opportunity to review this with the HR department nor with the consultant, Carlson Detman, up until this time to determine what that appropriate position might look like. However, a second person within our GIS area is critical. While we've been able to keep up with our current GIS needs over the past several years, we continue to develop new programs that utilize GIS capability. And we do have a significant backlog of legacy GIS data that needs to come out of a paper or, or other format and get into the electronic format so the data can be usable within the GIS system. So HR and the IT department have discussed taking a look at IT needs in 2022 to determine what's in the best structure, what, what the best structure for the city might be. But regardless of whether this position resides within DPW or the IT department, the position is still going to be needed. So this position, as proposed, is jointly funded by the Stormwater Utility, Sanitary Utility and General Levy, and the levy impact is approximately $35,000.
Thank you, Director.
Okay, I appreciate that, Director Gner. I, I think, you know, looking at this position and, and some of the questions and issues that we on council have at many times, you know, trying to get, gather data. We're all about having data so that we can talk to our constituents well. And I think this is very important that we have this position, get this backlog taken care of so that we have the proper information that we can talk to our constituents about. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Alder. I don't think I asked for...
I do have one other question for Director Gner. Director, we recently approved a solid waste agreement with Brown County that calls for tipping fees for garbage to increase. DPW has only a marginal increase in tipping fees for 2021. I know you talked to me about it, but could you explain why?
Certainly. Historically, we have received revenue for the recycling material that we've brought to Brown County. However, over the past three years or so, the recycling markets have significantly depressed. And as a result, we've actually had to pay to dispose of our recyclables, whereas we received the revenue prior to that. Over the past couple of months here in the last part of 2021, those recycling markets have begun to rebound to the point where we're starting to make revenue on that material again. The prognosis for 2022 shows that we should be able to maintain that same level of, of revenue stream on the recycling. So even though the tipping fees for 2022 are going up at the new Brown County South landfill, the number of tons we're paying for disposal has gone down because we're not paying to dispose of the recyclables anymore. So as a result of that, we feel comfortable with the, with the sanitation disposal estimates that we provided in the budget for 2022.
Okay. I appreciate that. There was one other question I had. I'm trying to get to the budget book. I'm trying to think, materials and supplies. What number do we have for that? I, I can't see it right offhand.
Would start with a 5-4?
Pardon?
Would start with a 5-4 for DPW?
Yes, it's 5-4-0-0-1.
Okay. All right. There was another one, Director, that I had talked to you about.
Yeah, and that, that was it, Alder. It was materials and supplies. Excuse me. Materials and supplies for operations division.
Okay, operations.
So in the, in the electronic, it's page 167, page 113.
Okay.
In the print copy, and it's line item 5-4-0-0-1.
Right.
In 2021, our budget number was 587,200. We are proposing 280,500. So that's in excess of a $300,000 actual drop and a reduction of about 52.2%. The reason for that is the, the winter season of 2020, 2021 was actually relatively mild, especially after New Year's Day. And as a result, especially from a salt perspective, we wound up, the way that our structure works, our salt acquisition is through the state contract with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And we have to estimate what those salt needs are in July of the, of the year previous. So we put an order in in July of this year that's going to cover us for the 2021, 2022 winter. When you do that, there is a commitment that you have to take, and then there's a reserve that you have an option on. And when we made the commitment for the 2020, 2021 winter, we committed to buy a certain amount of salt that was paid for out of the '21 budget. As a result of the mild winter, we were left within excess of 5,000 tons of salt on the dock that we had paid for that we didn't use. So I've got 5,000 tons of salt in inventory in my possession that's already paid for that we can go into the 2021, 2022 winter with. As a result, we simply reduced our material request for this year to reflect the salt we have. We do expect going into the '22, '23, so for the '23 budget year... the '22, '23, so for the '23 budget year, that materials and supplies will come back up. But for a one-year dip, because we have the salt on on hand and not have to pay for additional salt, we felt it was reasonable to reduce that budget request by about 300,000.
Well, thank you for that. I guess I I just wanted to know, since your tenure as director, have we had that issue before?
We have not. We've had a couple of years where we've had some excess salt. It typically has ranged whenever we've had those those lucky opportunities. I don't think we've ever had more than about 1,500 ton of salt left over after a mild winter. More often than not, in my nine years as director, we've actually had to come back in requesting funds from the finance department either out of, we've had a couple of years where there was some carryover funding where revenues exceeded expenses, and we had money left over from a prior year budget, and we've requested carryover funding. Or we've gone to contingency fund, requesting additional funds to buy enough salt to get through a season. That that's more often the case. We just happen to luck into a mild winter where we didn't use as much salt. And this is actually reflective of some of the some of the initiatives that DPW has been pursuing over the last 10 to 12 years. Our utilization of our brining system has allowed us to reduce salt usage by about 30%. Now, that was reflected in the number we requested in the '21 budget. But some of these technologies, depending on brining early as opposed to coming out after the material or after the precipitation hits the ground, and salting, has allowed our our staff to become much more efficient, much more adept at at handling that snow and ice up front. So we have been able to get away, you know, especially with warmer temperatures, on lesser salt usage.
Okay, I think that about answers it. I just was wondering if you have any farmer, farmer's almanacs prognostications for this year, if you feel pretty good?
Well, what we have heard, at least the long-range forecasts that we've seen, are indicating that warmer than normal temperatures, but wetter than normal for precipitation. That's not necessarily a good thing. It could, it could end up with a lesser amount of snowpack, but that also could result in a situation much like the 2013, 2014 winter where we wound up with every one of, we had 14 major storms that year, and all but one of those storms were either before the storm or at the end of the storm turned into freezing rain and ice. So warmer and wetter doesn't necessarily mean better. It that could actually, from a transportation perspective and a salt use perspective, that could wind up much worse for us than than a standard snowy winter.
Okay. That's all I have. I appreciate the time, Director Grenier, and thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Alder. I feel to ask for a motion on this. Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder LeFave. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. On to number 17. So just to remind folks, at the committee level, $20,000 was added to the parks, rec, and forestry and equipment replacement pools seasonal salaries budget. So I would entertain a motion here.
What page?
Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Dorf. This item was pulled by Alder Scanell.
We need to also pull 31 at the same time, but that makes sense? No? As we all know, the original plan for our forestry department was going to be pretty tight. We were going to be focusing on cutting ash trees and probably cutting back on trimming. Yes, thank you. So I, Director Ditchite, came forward to here with a plan where we would add two additional forestry two workers and decrease the number of seasonal forestry workers down to five. So I would like to make that motion.
Okay, motion has been made by Alder Scanell. Could you repeat that?
I'll second it.
Two.
Yeah, Alder Scanell, if you could just repeat your motion.
Certainly. The motion is to hire two additional forestry two workers, two and two. And removing and reducing the seasonal workers down to the five, down to five. It was at 10.
All right, that motion has been made, that motion has been made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Weary. Director Ditchite, if you could just speak to this a little bit for council, and then we'll entertain some more discussion.
Yes, just to expand on the description a little bit, a few months ago, we brought together, brought forward a plan of how we were going to deal with the removal of all of the dead ash trees in the streets. And in that plan, what we said, what we could do with the existing staff is be proactive on removing 2,000 street trees over the next three years. And the only way that we could accomplish that task with the staff we have is to temporarily put on hold the majority of tree pruning and also temporarily put on hold tree stump removal for three years. And at the committee, there was a request that we bring forward a proposal of what it would take to be proactive on removing all 2,000 trees over three years and not reduce the the services that we currently provide. So as Alder Scanell mentioned, I sent information to all of the council members today clarifying what our proposal would be, and it would be to hire two forestry two workers and to decrease five seasonal forestry two work, four, five seasonal forestry workers. So the total impact to the budget is $111,778. And storm sewer budget funds 88% of the forestry department's budget. How that breakdown would come out would be the increase to the city budget, which would be 12% of that, would be an increase of $13,413 as an increase to the city budget. And then there would be a $98,364 increase to the stormwater budget. And I've talked to Director Grenier about this in the past. He can speak as to how much that would affect the storm sewer budget. And I believe Steve has that information if you're ready for those questions to be answered. Otherwise, I can answer any other questions as it relates to the proposed restructure.
Great, thanks, Director Ditchite. Director Grenier, if you just want to give us that that analysis real quick, and then we'll have a discussion.
Certainly. As Director Ditchite indicated, the impact of the stormwater budget would be $98,364. Within the stormwater utility, we have 79,250 equivalent runoff units. And the way that the stormwater charges to the residents and businesses are factored, we simply take our expenses and we divide by the number of ERUs. So the $98,364 divided by the 79,250 ERUs comes out to an increase of $1.24 per ERU per year. By way of comparison, we were not planning on having a stormwater charge increase this year. So with this change at $1.24, the ERU charge per year would go from $122.70 up to $123.94 per ERU, or a 1% increase.
Thank you, Director Grenier. I believe Alder Weary had his hand up, and then Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and thanks, Director Ditchite. You did a great job of putting together that ash bor plan, because, you know, as we all know, it's a headache that we're all dealing with. And we had exchanged emails quite a bit the last few days trying to think of of some alternatives. And I appreciate you putting together this plan. Before I talk about that, I just wanted to discuss what would be the benefit of doing this, rather than, let's say, contracting out with the take down those dead ash trees and we just keep doing our job, our normal job.
Well, to answer that question, we would have to quote that out. And we have 2,000 ash trees that need to be removed. If you just assume $500 per tree, which I think is probably on the low end, I mean, I think many of you have contracted out tree removals at your house, that would be an increase of $1 million just to remove 2,000 street trees. That would not, probably would not include the stump grinding either as part of that.
Perfect. No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to, you know, fully explain that part of it, and you did great. Yeah, I fully do back this plan. When I first got in the council eons ago, we had a tree pruning cycle of, I think, 10 to 12 years. And and people really were getting upset with that because they were hanging over sidewalks and hanging over the street, dead branches. It was really causing an issue. And that that was a big thing to hire some more workers so we could get that cycle back down. And I'm afraid if we go up to an 11-year pruning cycle, it's going to be tough to catch up, if not impossible, especially with a three-year, you know, no stump grinding. That's going to be its own complete headache, you know? If if stumps are there for a month, they get people complaining. You can't imagine three years, they're going to be these rotting little pieces of whatever. And and we would also have limited planting of new trees, and we're a tree city, and we pride ourselves on replacing those trees when they come down. So I'm in favor of it, and I would be in favor of moving it over to the stormwater budget as well. Since we weren't having an increase, it's actually a little less than a percent. I'd be interested to hear everybody else's opinions, but I think for safety, aesthetics, and just doing the basic business of city and staying up with that, I think we should do it. But I'd be interested to hear others' comments.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf, and then Alder Corpus Dax?
Your Honor. I mean, we could come from a raise.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Oh, is it working?
Yeah.
Okay. It could come from a raise, from the stormwater rates. It could. But if we didn't want to do that, we could also think about using the 125,000 from the increased ambulance rates that were proposed. You know, we we adjusted the budget. And then we're still going to be talking about using the American Rescue Act Plan Act revenue later on. So I guess I would kind of like to not talk about raising those stormwater rates quite yet.
Just on that point, real quickly.
Yeah.
We sort of have an across-the-board standard of 88% of our forestry budget being supported by our stormwater. So that's why, that's why this discussion is taking place, sort of triggers almost that increase in the stormwater budget because that's that's the existing policy of the city.
So we can't take it from something else?
You could, but it would be, this, this, these positions would be treated differently than every other position in the forestry budget, if you were to do that.
Thank you for explaining that. Yeah, I don't know. I, that's all I have to say. I was, I guess I was trying to keep something flat, but
Yeah.
maybe that's not going to work then. Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
It does seem like a small increase then, but, okay.
And then I think, I think we had Alder Burnett.
I think Alder Corpus Dax was first, Mayor.
She said she didn't want to speak.
Oh, okay.
She was stretching her arm, apparently.
Yeah, I think, thank you for bringing this up, Alder Weary. You know, I talked about this at the committee level quite a few times. You know, obviously, we know we need to cut down on the emerald ash tree issue, the bor issue. And I think the concern was that we were not going to do a lot of the other things that constituents come to expect. And a lot of them are safety-related, you know, pruning trees. I know we said that we would do it for emergency bases. But also, the tree stumps, can't have stumps that protrude six inches from the surface of the ground all throughout our neighborhoods. It's a tripping hazard, especially when it's dark out. And so I'm definitely in favor of this, being one of two districts in the city that's most affected, the other being Alder Corpus Dax. A little hesitant with the stormwater, and I appreciate the mayor's rationale. I like Alder Dorf's, you know, reasoning a little more if it's just a one-year fix. The, I guess, the issue I have with using stormwater utility is I would need to have an assurance that we're actually going to be planting trees to the same rate that we're taking them down to justify using the stormwater utility. And the reason I say that is if we're cutting down trees, I don't know if the roots of a dead tree absorb water anymore. I don't, I'm not an expert in that field. But for the sake of transparency and fairness to the public, if we kind of tell them that trees help prevent water from going to the stormwater system through roots, we oughtn't be replacing trees, not just cutting them down. So I would have to get an assurance from Director Ditchite or Mr. Pilat, if he's on the line, that that status quo will be met, that we will be replacing trees at the same rate that we're cutting them down. Otherwise, I don't think it's right to put it on stormwater bills. I guess the other other comment I'll make that's kind of partly a question is, you know, we're hiring two additional employees for the course of the year, but we're removing five temporary or seasonal employees. Like, I guess my question is, if we can't hire the stormwater, if we can't hire the foresters in the amount of time, I don't know if I feel comfortable reducing five temporary seasonal employees. That's just like five people that can help us with it versus just two. Like, in my head, the numbers just make me a little nervous that we're giving up five people to activate on crews to gain just two employees. So those are my thoughts, comments. I don't know where to go with that, Mayor, if you could.
Yeah, we can go to-
Do your best for directing that to staff to answer. I would appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. We'll go to Director Ditchite, and then I think Director Grenier also had something to add.
Yeah, so I have a couple of comments in regards to that. So what we were asked to do as part of this plan is talk about what it would take to not reduce services. So in our current staffing levels, we currently plant between 800 to 1,000 trees. In this new plan with the two new staff members, that is what we're budgeting for also. So in year one, I believe the plan stated we were going to remove 900 ash trees in year one, and then it would decrease in years two and three. So maybe the first year, we might not be replacing as much. Because when I say planting 800 to 1,000 trees, that's throughout the parks. That's not just on street trees. So maybe year one, we might not be replanting the same amount as what we're cutting down or removing, but we would still be planting how much we currently plant. Now, years two and three, I think we'd be more comparable to planting however much we remove. Now, the benefit to adding two full-time staff is after the three years are up, we can then increase our tree plantings even more or do more proactive stump grinding, because we'll have two additional staff members to do that work after year three. So I think long term, we can definitely accomplish that goal of additional planting.
Thanks, Director. And then Director Grenier?
Yes, and Director Ditchite and I have had these conversations. We're looking at this as as more of a long play, not just the first, not, definitely not the first year, and definitely not the first three years. So in the long play, we do see the additional full-time staff as being able to accomplish more of those water goals. The other thing that has come up recently, and we're going to be bringing this back to Improvement Services after the first of the year, with the forward-looking or systematic sidewalk inspection and replacement program, a lot of the tree impacts that we're seeing on sidewalk, we have to rethink how that program's going to work. And we're in desperate need of forestry to provide assistance with us to be able to replace those sidewalks or make decisions on how we're handling those trees without adversely impacting the tree. Because right now, we're root cutting and we're causing some pretty irreparable damage to some of those trees in mature tree canopy areas, which is the last thing we want to do. So after, you know, in conjunction with the first three years of the ash program, but also supplementing that for both the stormwater with the additional planting in, you know, years three and beyond, and then for additional assistance with our sidewalk program, we also agree with Park Rec and Forestry that these full-time employees who are forestry worker twos, they have a lot more expertise than what our seasonal workers do, and that's going to be the best way to go about this for the long play.
And one other thing to note on that is the seasonal employees are very limited on what they can do. They can't use a lot of the heavy equipment. They they can't use, you know, the lift trucks. You know, a lot of their work is on the ground, just picking up the brush that our forestry one and two workers cut down. And so all- And so although, you know, there is a benefit to having the bodies there, it's very minimal on what skills they can provide and how much work they can get accomplished. And sometimes they're just tripping over each other if you have too many seasonal employees.
Thanks, Directors. Alder Galvin, Alder Stoyer, Alder Weary.
Mayor, is this thing working where we click on, request to speak?
I've just been looking at the Zoom tonight, so my apologies for that.
Okay, all right. And I apologize. I don't know what, my brain phased out or something when we started talking about this. And I didn't have the benefit of seeing Director's email today because we seem to get a lot of these emails last minute and I just had a lot going on in my life today and I didn't get to it. So can someone explain to me how hiring, and this is what it sounded like to me, we're hiring two full-time seasonal employees, not hiring...
Two full-time employees.
Two full-time, and we're not hiring five part-time seasonal employees, but it's still increasing $111,000?
Right, because these are two full-time, round the, round the year, permanent employees and eliminating five seasonals. So just...
But it's still, so taking out those five part-time seasonal employees, we're still needing $111,000?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And so for each forestry two-worker, it's approximately $71,000 for salary plus benefits, whereas each seasonal position is $6,000. I mean, those are college students that are just doing it for a couple of weeks in the summer. So there's a significant difference in cost between the two. And so even, you know, the number of hours that they put in, I mean, like I said, the seasonal employees are only there for a limited term, whereas these two full-time employees are there year-round, 40 hours a week. So you get a lot more productivity out of them.
All right. Thanks so much. I apologize for slowing things down here.
No, no problem at all. I'm forgetting who else was in. Alder Stoyer.
I had a chance to sit in on the parks meeting and I also talked to Director Ditchite about this as well. You know, I think one of the issues that we have with the city is that it takes eight to nine years or so to go through the entire city, trimming, pruning, doing whatever from east to west or west to east, depending. It sounds like this will bring it down to a five-year cycle if we hire these two people. One of the big concerns is we have 2,000 ash trees that are coming down. You have a lot of stumps. It's just going to be a nightmare, you know, to the public, I think. I think for the, for the minimal increase, I think it's, I think this is a very important matter. So I would, I would definitely support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Stoyer. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm still supportive. I just wanted to point out, one nugget that Director Ditchite did include in the email, that this past year, even though we have 10 of these college students technically in our, for hire, we only had three because people just aren't applying for it. So we really only had three. And so to have somebody who's permanently there rather than hoping we're going to get a full 10, I think would have a benefit as well.
Yep. Well, that's a good point. Alder Johnson, then Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Ditchite, I sent you an email on this and I appreciate the response, but just so that we can publicly get an answer to it, there, there, there's no additional equipment or modifications to your fleet that would be necessary to add to full-time employees?
That's correct. So we're able to staff full crews with the existing equipment we have or equipment that's already currently budgeted for. So if you recall, in 2021, we bonded for some additional forestry equipment. So we're in the process of quoting that out. So we're quoting out a new bucket truck as we speak with money we have. And so in order to utilize that truck, obviously, these two positions would utilize that truck. So that new vehicle is a new piece of equipment. It's not a replacement piece.
And there's no other hidden expenses that would perhaps come up from this type of change?
No, we've looked at how we would structure our crews and which crews would be doing what at different times of the years. And what we've determined is we have enough equipment currently to have full crews without buying anything new, other than the bucket truck, which we're quoting out right now.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this is a question for legal. The, the policy, the 88%, 12%, is that something that can be modified here or is that something that requires an entirely different agenda item?
Because it is related to, so because we are talking about how we're going to fund stuff as well, what's, is what's created as part of the budget, yes, this is an appropriate time to address that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just on that real quick. I mean, the way that we would do that is just act on this item. And then Alder Scanell has already pulled item 31.
What's item 31?
Upcoming, that's a stormwater revenue, stormwater revenue.
Okay.
So at that point, we'd be able to just have that discussion if we want to increase it or leave it status quo. And depending upon that decision, then that would just indicate how it's funded.
Okay, so I'll hold my comments then for that agenda item, but thank you, Director Ditchite, for that clarification on the equipment.
Thanks, Alder Dorf.
Thank you. Just, just because I'm so amazed by this, for the second time in the same meeting, Alder Weary and I were like exactly on the same page. And all I was going to say was that we could only hire three seasonal workers last summer. So it's just so amazing. I just had to say it.
Yeah, we should all pause to celebrate that.
Moment of silence.
Any Alder Scanell and then Alder Vanderlees?
I just wanted to thank the director for coming up with this. I mean, I think we got a mighty fine budget here, but this was the one concern I had and talked to the mayor about it, the director about it, and I really appreciate this plan. This is really good. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alder, and thanks to the Parks Committee. I know, you know, not all members, clearly, are members of that committee, but there was a good discussion at the committee level about some of these concerns. And as a result, Director Ditchite and our forester, Brian Pilat, were able to come up with this, with this plan. So thanks to everybody involved in that debate and discussion. Alder Vanderlees?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the council that stormwater runoff fees are not real popular. And if we can find the money somewhere else, I think it might be wise. Most people that, you know, they look at that, you know, they, they just frown as far as, you know, the amount that they're paying. You know, most businesses are paying, you know, a substantial amount, you know, if they have a parking lot or what have you. And they don't have hardly any trees on their property, you know? So I'm just mentioning that if we can find the money somewhere else, so much the better. I know that the Parks Department with the forestry, I know that, you know, they got a huge task ahead of them. I understand that. I don't think we should put the pressure on them that they have to remove 2,000 trees in such a short order either. I think they should do it on their work. In other words, they know how many people they have working there and how much they can do. And as far as replanting as many as they take down, I'd say let them, let them handle their own department as far as how many they can replace. There's plenty of trees in the city of Green Bay. You know, if they fall a little bit behind on, on planting so much, you know, that's, let them handle that. That'd be my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any final thoughts on this item? So we had a motion and a second to create these two, city forester, two positions, eliminating five seasonal forestry employees. We had that motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Posh nay? The ayes have it. That change has been made. I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is amended.
Yes, motion has been made to approve as amended by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin on that. Alder Stoyer?
Well, there was another item in the parks that I wanted to talk about, so this is for this, right?
Okay, well, we can...
Yeah, let's do that.
We're still on parks, though, so we should set this...
Right, but I do want to talk about another item.
Do you have a motion that you're planning to offer?
All I wanted, I really wanted to talk about the park program, the 32 parks versus 16. You know, just...
Yeah.
So I might make an amendment for that.
Okay. So we will set that aside. Alder Stoyer, ask your questions.
All right. I just wanted to ask Director Ditchite about this. You know, we had 32 park programs and now we're down to 16. And you did mention that if all 32 would be added, if all 32 had programs, it'd be 125,155 to the budget added. So that's 7,822 for each location added to the budget. I know you're still talking about what parks are going to have the programs and not. You still have to decide upon that. I don't know if you can just clarify that a little bit and just talk about, about that, if, if that's a feasibility or not.
Sure. As you mentioned, we budgeted 32 sites for the last two years and due to staffing shortages, we've only been able to staff 16 locations both years, in 2020 and 2021. So what we're proposing to do in this budget is to downsize it to 16 sites from the 32, primarily for the reason of rightsizing it with the number of staff that we feel we'll be able to hire this year. And we're looking at this as an advantage for upcoming years. So this will allow us the opportunity to maybe reimagine the program and revisit it as, you know, something slightly different. And if so, what could that be? And maybe there's some grant funding out there for a program like that. So we're looking at this as an opportunity to refocus that, the vision of that program as a whole. And if we find we can't find a grant source for a reimagined program, then over time, as the staffing shortages change, if the council would like to add a few sites each year, that would be your prerogative to kind of add some of those back in down the road. But we do see some clear advantages to downsizing it this year because, you know, the last two years, you know, we budgeted this additional 125,000 each year and at the end of the year, that money ends up going into contingency because we're not spending it.
I appreciate the question. You know, some, somewhere down the line, I like to see all the programs at all the parks, quality of life issue, et cetera. But I appreciate your con, your talk on this and I, I would, I would concur with that and we, hopefully in the future, we might be able to change that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Dorf and then Alder Corpus Dax.
Thank you. So after we talked at the joint meeting, I did reach out to the school district because one of the things we talked about was kind of having a synergy between the parks programs and the school programs, finding out which schools were going to have summer school programs and which parks were. So we could, we could spread it around a little bit, make sure all the areas are covered. And I did get the information to Director Ditchite of the person that's in charge of summer school. I also spoke with the deputy superintendent and so they're waiting for a call or maybe they've already gotten a call from the city. But that's another piece of the 16 that we'll choose. We will look at where our programs already being offered for children and then we can choose those 16 in a better fashion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Dorf. Appreciate that. Alder Corpus Dax.
Thank you. My comment was similar, is that it's not just, sorry, thank you. My comment's similar. It wasn't just a staffing shortage, it was also that the schools were happy, were hosting their programs in the park too. So that's also pulling kids away from, from the city program as well.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on that discussion point? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve as amended and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posh nay? The ayes have it and number 17 has been approved. We are on to revenue, stormwater or storm sewer budget.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. I thought I had pulled the police budget. I did not. Did I make a motion to reconsider to pull that budget?
Yep, you bet.
All right. Thank you.
Number 14.
Parks and police, we'll start with the confusion.
Yep, you bet. So we will also address number 14. Yeah, motion to reconsider made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Stoyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Posh nay? The ayes have it. We'll reconsider that.
Mayor?
Yes.
You would, you would also probably want to have to pull number 21 because the 21 and 31 usually zero out the expenses of revenues. I mean, I would defer to Director Gneri, but I think you also will have to consider that one.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we all entertain a motion to reconsider that.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder LeFave. That's on item 21. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posh nay? The ayes have it. So since 21 comes first and then 31, I mean, like I said, when Alder Johnson had raised the question, this is really a policy decision for you all. If you want to stick to the 88% of our forestry budget coming from stormwater, this is the point to have that discussion. If you want to go in a different direction, then we don't really need to, to make any changes to 21 or 31. So anybody, anybody want to kick that off or have any thoughts? Alder Vanderlees?
Yes, Mayor. What would our options be to move that money, to get the money from a different source? Could we get it from a contingency fund?
No, I mean, we would just use the levy.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alder Stoyer?
That increase be, you know, I guess, you know, I, I'm not totally against the dollar 24, you know, looking at the gauge of the problems that we have with forestry and that right now.
Right.
You know, you have to kind of look at what the problem right now is and that, I think that's a big, big problem.
Sure.
So the dollar 24, I'm okay with, but what, what would that be if Director Allenbecker could tell us?
Yeah, I mean, I think Director Allenbecker could kind of give us a little bit of context based on the fact that the committee was able to bring up EMS revenue and kind of where that, where that leaves us in comparison to the, to the budget as proposed and some of the changes that have been made at committee end tonight. And while we wait for that, Alder Galvin?
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, Director Allenbecker.
I'm ready for that. With the changes, what finance committee had changed and now with the 15,000 that we have added to date, we're looking at a mill rate of about $9.80 or about a 0.8% increase. If we were to add another 98,364, that would go up to 981 or about a 0.93 mill rate increase. So for about every 60,000, you're adding about a penny to the mill rate. So today, even with all these changes, even if you added the 98, it is less than two pennies that were going up on the mill rate.
Okay. Thank you, Director Allenbecker. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I can understand that Alder Vanderlees feels that some people are disgruntled, but either way, we're paying. Either way, there's going to be an increase, either a levy increase or stormwater increase. Either way, we pay. I, I am not in favor of taking any contingency money, one-time money. We've made that mistake in the past. We're still paying for it now and, you know, so I mean, if you want to put it on a levy, fine. If you want to leave it where it is, but stormwater, fine. But I will not support taking any one-time money out of contingency funds or anything else like that where we end up short the year after that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf, did you?
Well, yeah.
Alder Dorf?
Thank you. So my proposal had been not using one-time money, but using the increase in revenue that we were going to get from the ambulance calls. And the, I think when we ended at the joint finance meeting, we ended up putting that 125,000 and into the one-time fixes and taking it out of the 655,000.
No. Diana's shaking her head. Director Allenbecker, do you want to weigh in on that?
The discussion was had at the meeting, but we decided not to make that change. So correct, there was a total of, I think, 123,000 that was in total revenues and offset by expenses. We actually added back $123,000 worth of revenue. So at that point, we still left the reduction and the addition in revenues, but we still left 655,000 of one-time money for ARPA. But knowing that that discussion was going to happen here, you're, the discussion is this, do you want to reduce? Again, the budget was proposed at a 1% mill rate. Before we finish tonight, do you want to keep it at close to the 1% or do you want to leave it with all these changes and then still leave the one-time uses of 655? So that decision actually hasn't been made and we did not finalize that decision in our meeting. We decided to leave it as increased revenue and leave the 655 one-time money as proposed, knowing that decision would be made here.
And what it ended up then was bringing the mill rate down at that point to...
Correct.
0.74. Was that it?
Yeah, some 0.7%, somewhere increased where it was originally 1%, as proposed.
So we're just talking about between 0.74 and 1, right? Right. So there's, there's a whole bunch of ways to get this funding, but none of them should be from one-time funding and none of them would be. So I guess it's, I
Right.
I guess what are the unintended consequences of treating these two employees differently than every other employee? Is it just that their money comes, their salary comes from a different pot? Is that, is that a problem?
Right. I don't know, Director Ditchite or Director Grenier, if you want to weigh in on that?
From, from our perspective, it, it's really more a finance issue than, than anything. Keeping track of where these different employees are funded from. Generally speaking, we, historically, we have liked to take divisions or departments and, and have some consistency in how we're, we're handling those, those funding mechanisms so that it's more easily documentable and we can, we can trace where, where the money's being spent.
So either way, the money is going to come from the taxpayers, whether it comes from keeping the mill rate at 1 or taking it from the stormwater and then keeping that consistent. It's going to come from the same people.
And not, I mean, some just
Either way.
Generally, that's true. The only difference is when, you know, some property owners are tax exempt. So this, this applies to, to everyone across the board. But that's
For the stormwater?
For stormwater, yep.
Then it applies to everyone.
But generally speaking, you're right in, in what you're saying.
So I'll, just to have a motion, or maybe someone does, just, I'll move that it comes from the stormwater.
Okay.
Utility.
Okay. So the motion is essentially to pay for those new positions that were created in parks with that 88% coming from the stormwater budget. Discussion, Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm opposed to the motion. You know, when we, when we first migrated the forestry department into stormwater fees, I didn't support that. I didn't like the, the philosophy behind that. I still don't. If there's an opportunity here for us today, I don't know what the math would be, right, to take that from an 88% funded budget down to say 85, 80, whatever that number is. I'd rather move in that direction by placing this on the levy. It, to me, it's more about truth and transparency and, and having folks recognize that when you're paying for your forestry department, this is the budget line where it comes out of. Just the, these sort of accounting tricks, I would say, you know, where, where we're going to split it up and reclassify it as a different type of fee. Sure, it all comes at, at some point from the taxpayers. How it's derived isn't exactly the same, but it's more about that transparency that, that I would personally favor. And so I'd rather see it on the levy, which is, which is why I'm going to oppose the motion on the floor right now.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlock and then Alder Scanell?
Just a clarification, please. Do I understand correctly that all forestry comes from stormwater fees?
88%.
88% comes from it and the rest of it comes from?
The levy.
The levy. Thank you.
Alder Scanell?
Thank you. I, I support the motion. I think it's, I think the formula is fine. I think it's transparent enough. Everybody knows what the formula is, what we're doing here. I don't know where the lack of transparency is. It's just, you know, we have pots to pay from, you know, and we're taking from this pot. I think if we're going to reduce the formula, the percentage of the formula, I wouldn't really, I'd really want to revisit that whole, wow, how did we came up to 88% to begin with and everything? I don't even remember exactly. I, I remember having this discussion about the formula. I supported 88%. I don't know why we would change it. You know, robbing people to pay Paul. I think we've had enough tight budgets with our levies in the past that I think this is a smart move, a smart cup to be pulling that, those funds from. So I, I don't see any point in, in messing with the policy or the formula. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf, did you?
No, I, I guess I just want to, to reaffirm that it, it seems to be more transparent if the foresters come from that line item than to now have them coming from two different line items if we're using more of the levy or if we're changing the levy percentage. So I, I would again say that I think it should come from stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Galvin?
This is for Director Ellenbecker. How much of our budget, if you could tell me percentage-wise roughly, comes from the levy?
Yep. Total expenditures for this proposed budget as we speak right now is 116 million for 18701. And the levy proposed at this point is 58 million 078607. So dead on 50% right now.
All right. And, and how many other sources do we come up with the other 58 million?
You have grant funding, you have federal and state funding, you have miscellaneous revenues, you have other funding sources that have, because, you know, within our expenses, we have all of our debt payments, about 20 million, 10 million of it comes from kids and other funding sources. So some of that is funds drawn, pulled in. So those are the major sources of revenue.
And, and the fees that we charge for different items?
That would also be, and again, what happens, you have all expenses, you back off every possible fee, revenue, grant funding, money we can get, pull in administrative services, chargebacks, anything that we have. So you take total expenses minus every single revenue source that we have, EMS revenues, anything we have, whatever is left over is what we have to put on the levy.
All right. Thank you very much. So I understand about transparency and I understand Alder Johnson's concern about, you know, where, where we're getting the money from. But if we were to walk up to Mr. Citizen or Mrs. Citizen or Ms. Citizen on, on the street and ask them if they knew where the money comes from for 116 million, most of them would think 100% of it comes from tax levy. And the reality is, there are a lot of different pieces of this pie to put it all together, 116 million. And like I said before, one way or another, we pay. The only thing I like about not taking it off of the levy is it allows us not to continuously raise that levy. So we're not maxing out all the time. It leaves us some wiggle room in case there are emergencies or things that do come up. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the way we're currently doing it by putting a part of that forestry on, on the stormwater sewer. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunet and then Alder Dorf?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I like that we're doing this. I like that we're fixing a problem with our budget. So I was concerned. I'm against the motion as it stands. One thing that I will say is I believe that forestry should have, in my opinion, always been mostly levy-supported. That was a decision that was two years ago, was not popular. I know that. I voted against it then. Not comfortable with adding more to the stormwater bills. The average person, in my opinion, expects that the forestry department come out of their levy dollars, their tax dollars. This kind of sets a bit of a precedent, although not major, but it does set a precedent that I was afraid we would do a couple of years ago when we made this change. Some other municipalities are adding firefighter fees to their stormwater bills. It gets easier and each council will make their own decision. I get that. One thing I'll, I'd like to ask Director Ellenbecker, I cannot attend the entire joint finance and personnel committee, but if I recall, the, the contingency fund budgeted this year went from 100,000 to 150. Did that survive as is the joint finance meeting, personnel meeting?
Actually, you were, you were correct. We had, we did increase contingency, but we had it 150 and we moved it up to 200. And that did stay, stay in the budget. So there has been an increase in the contingency from 2021 budget to 2022 of 50,000.
Yeah. So I, I don't know the reasoning behind that decision, but I, I do like savings accounts, you know, I, but I think that that is one thing that we could reduce the contingency fund and not put it on the stormwater utility funds, fees. One thing that we did with the contingency fund the last few years, you remember, first year, the majority of this council, we, we had been having issues with fighting land going into trust. And we put some attorney fees from our contingency fund, and that's public knowledge. So I'm not disclosing anything closed session. And then we had needed to pay for some legal fees because our attorney's office was inundated with work that was out of the ordinary. And so we're addressing that in this budget by adding another city attorney. And I get that contingency funds are there for the unknown unforeseen, but this is sort of one of those things where we could use the money that was allocated for the increase from 100 to 200,000 and not mess around with stormwater fees. So I'm against the motion as it stands. Again, very happy we're doing something. I just don't think adding money to the stormwater bills is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf and then Alder Scanell?
The first is it went from 150 to 200,000. So that's only $50,000. And the second clarification for Alder Galvin and the rest of council, we have a beautiful chart on page eight shows where all the revenues come from. So 50% right here, property taxes and other taxes, 3.2%. And that's where that stormwater would come from.
Spoken like a true finance chair.
True finance.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm, you know, there are consequences to rating our contingency fund. There are years past where we had to borrow into it quite a bit and we ended up getting dinged for our bond rating. We were downgraded as a city. We had, we went from, I think, an A rating down to B or whatever it was. Anyway, we went down. So I'm glad we are finally putting some money into that contingency fund to, to see if we can't boost up that bond rating again. It, it does matter to keep our, our contingency fund well-filled and also for an emergency. I really look at that as more for emergencies. I don't see this as an emergency. So I'm really against taking anything from contingency. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderlies?
Mayor, as far as our bond rating goes, that's more, more how much we're borrowing, not our contingency fund. Contingency fund is just money that you'd have on hand. If you borrow a lot of money and you don't have a lot of money to back it up, your bond rating will go down. That, that's the issue there. As far as contingency fund, it's not really affecting the bond rating.
One question?
Thank you.
Right. Maybe Director Ellenbecker could weigh in about our fund balance and how that factors in?
Sure. They, they have a small correlation together. What happens is if you put your contingency account within your budget, whether it's 150, 200,000, if you don't use it and your budget came in, the rest of your budget came in right on track, you have now added more money to your fund balance. So that fund balance does affect, that is a direct correlation. They do look at your fund balance when you are borrowing. So the correlation is yes, you put more money in there, that makes your budget a little safer. You meet budget or you come in favorable, that increases your fund balance. And to Alder Scanell's point, we did have a downgrade a couple of years ago. We went from a double A2 to a double A, double A3. Again, a double A is still considered to be still in the very high, high levels of ratings, but we did have a drop a couple of years back.
Great. Thank you, Director. Alright, so we do have a motion and a second. And that would be to fund these, these two new positions 88%.
Would you use the board, Mayor?
Stormwater. We can definitely use the board.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Alders, you may vote. Okay, thank you. Here's your displayed vote.
And that is eight to four in favor. So that motion succeeds. We'll move along to item 31, approve the revenue storm sewer budget. And either Director Ellenbecker or Director Grenier, do we need an amendment with the appropriate dollar amount here?
I believe if I'm, if I'm correct in, in looking at this, electronic, page 251, paper copy, page 197, line item 46415, stormwater revenue would increase from 9,782,327 to
So I make a motion to increase our, to 9,782,327.
Okay.
Correct. That would be correct. That'd be an increase on both the expense side and the revenue side of 98,364 for storm.
Okay. Alder Scanell makes that motion, seconded by Alder Dorf. Discussion? Alder, or Johnson?
Does that, does that raise reflect 88% of those forestry positions that were created?
I believe so. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As, as we stated in earlier discussions, of the 111,778, 98,364 would go to the stormwater budget. That's 88% of the total. And that's all we did was increase the, both the expenses under the last vote and here under this item, the revenues correspondingly for that dollar amount.
Thanks, Director Grenier. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it and that change has been made. Entertained a motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
Motion to adopt as amended made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. On to item 14, police budget. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have two items I wanted to discuss. The first one just came up in the last week or so, maybe two. Like many of you, we all have doggy shoes and probably have Officer Mallory Meves on speed dial, at least speed email, right? So I had asked her about an item, if her interns could handle it. And I found out we don't have any right now. It's, it's hard to get people to, to fill that position because they only make 9,000 a year or something like that. And then I, when I questioned further, it sounds like we might actually have our community service officers do more of that role. I think it's important to have those off-hour help for humane officer items or when there's a vacation, things of that nature, unless Mallory wants to work 24/7, but I don't, I don't think she does. And Chief, I know you have a lot thrown at you. How many community service officers do we have right now? Are we fully staffed or Captain Werrich, whoever?
Yeah, thanks, Alder. Either Chief Davis or Commander Warwick care to weigh in? Chief Davis?
I'll have to ask Commander Warwick exactly where we're at on community service officers because as you know, there's a lot of turnover from that program into sworn officers. And I know we're in the, the process of looking at a couple of them. Those positions are not fully staffed. The, the animal control interns, you are correct, we had difficulty filling those positions. And so we found that it was more efficient to roll those duties up into the duties of the community service officers because then it's not such a narrowly focused position. So we are, and, and we're always actively trying to recruit for those positions when they're open. But I'll ask Commander Warwick to tell us exactly where we're at in terms of staffing in the CSO program.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Commander Warwick?
I believe we're at four CSOs. We're, we're budgeted for five. Like Chief said, that there's a high turnover and we're trying to use that as more of a mentor and cadet program to breed future police officers.
Alder Weary?
Okay, appreciate that. And I don't, obviously, I don't want to make any hasty decisions here on budget night, but is this something you'll be studying and maybe bring back a plan if you want to eliminate the interns and have more CSOs?
Chief Davis?
In a word, yes. That's going to be part of our larger staffing level evaluation of the police department that we want to do in the next year.
So potentially, we could be getting some more animal control interns. I don't want to remove it in their line item if we might go back to it.
I don't want to say that it's not, that it's, I, I don't want to, I don't want to rule it out, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
But again, you know, what we've found is, given the fact that those positions are very hard to fill, have very high turnover, it's probably a better business case to put the focus on recruiting CSOs, which are positions that we get a wider variety of work out of in addition to the animal control work that they can help with. But that's a discussion that we'll be having in 2022.
Thanks, Chief.
And Alder Weary, if I could, I, I would stand corrected. There's actually six CSOs. When we had, we've had this discussion in prior years, like Chief said, we get more value out of CSOs because they encompass the animal control duties. And when we were down a considerable number of officers, we thought that we could possibly get more service, better service to the city by providing, by adding more CSOs. So it's, it's, it's a balancing act, something that we can reevaluate in the future, like Chief said.
Chief said, but we are going forward, you know, our, our goal is to have five CSOs.
Thanks, Commander.
So would it be your recommendation, Chief or Commander, that we leave the control interns in there right now or remove that and use that money toward maybe another CSO? Or do you want to hold off and make that decision?
Well, we've always made, we've always kind of kept that as, we kept it in there so that we could add more CSOs because of the high turnover. So if the decision, we, I, my recommendation is to leave the animal control interns in there. And, and if we can use, you know, and have the balancing act, whether adding more CSOs or bringing back the animal control interns based on the number of officers, based on the service level, and based on what really kind of what we see as the foreseeable future within the department. Appreciate it.
And Alder Weary, it's, it would be my preference also that we leave those in there. Again, just because, you know, and here I am in month two in this position, but we, the plan is in 2022 to embark upon a really detailed examination of the police department and our staffing levels, how we deploy the staff that we have, so that I can come back to you in the budget development process for 2023 with a really clear picture of what we need to run the police department, given performance measures that we want to achieve. And, and so if we could leave those positions in there, that gives me some flexibility to work with that we wouldn't have if we just took them out of the budget entirely and then programmed that funding somewhere else. We may get there. I would just ask for a little bit of time to do that analysis.
That's perfect. I, I, unless anybody else has a question on that item, I think that's, that's a great idea to study it further, you know? Let's not make a hasty decision. The second item, and Chief, I appreciate you when we first met and then in follow-up discussions in talking about, you know, recruiting, you know, money set aside for recruiting or relocation expenses. And we had talked about the budget and you had offered that perhaps ARPA funds, you would have a, a suggestion to use it from that pot. Have you had a chance to look at that further or any ideas on that?
Yes, sir, we have, and I've submitted the request through the process that we've established with the mayor's office for ARPA fund requests for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total for an item to cover recruitment and retention. And the plan would be in years one and two, so in 2022 and 2023, we would set aside a hundred thousand dollars of that money for relocation costs, up to ten thousand dollars in qualifying costs for someone who has to move into the metro area to be a Green Bay police officer. We did this in a contingency model because it's really hard to predict exactly where we will get new hires from. And so, you know, it's, it's very hard to say, I need exactly this amount of money over those two years because we may need none of it, we may need more than that. So we set aside that hundred thousand dollars in year one and two. The additional fifty thousand dollars goes to wellness programming and professional development, which is a retention initiative. And then anything left after 2023 from that moving expenses contingency fund would just roll into the other part for wellness and professional development programming aimed at retention.
Appreciate it, and I, you know, I do like how you're, we're be, trying to be proactive here and, and recruit people to Green Bay. They don't have to be, you know, a rookie coming in, sell it, you know? Really sell what we have here in Green Bay, especially to other officers around the country who might be looking to move for one reason or another. Mr. Mayor, is, is that, I know it just was maybe submitted to you and maybe, maybe you haven't seen it, but is that something you would back? Is that amount of money coming from ARPA?
Yeah, absolutely. It's something that I've discussed directly with the chief and
Okay.
As long as it's, it's eligible and we can find the right bucket, absolutely in favor.
Because for right now, at least, I think that's fine. Maybe in the future, we should have it as a, as a line item in the budget if it continues to be a problem with recruiting, but you answered my question. I'll see if anybody else has any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunat and then Alder Galvin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did touch briefly on this at joint finance and personnel. The Chief Davis, he admitted that it's very likely that we will not be fully staffed at the police department by the end of the year. I think a reasonable person could come to that conclusion, without knowing how many officers we will have on boarded during the next year. But I guess my question is, when things like this come up, obviously, if we cannot fund, if we do not fill all police positions, we're obviously not going to need every dollar budgeted for salaries in police department. Chief Davis or Commander Warwick, not sure who could answer this question, but when things like that happen, we, we have unfilled positions, would that, those funds then go towards overtime for your existing officers? Because obviously, there's going to be some shifts that need to be picked up. Can you kind of explain how that works?
Sure. That is often where those, where that salary savings goes because we need a certain number of officers to meet our minimum staffing levels, and it's those minimum staffing levels in patrol in particular that are one of your biggest drivers of overtime expenses. And so when you have a shortage of personnel to meet those minimum staffing levels, it actually costs you more because overtime is paid at one and a half times the normal salary rate. Granted, you don't have the benefits cost, which offsets a little bit of that, but you normally could expect, especially at the, the vacancy level that we are at right now, to burn through a lot of that salary savings just in overtime costs. And then another thing that we see in police departments that I, I see already here is there are a lot of other expensive things that we have to try to find money for on a one-time basis. And so then, a lot of times, what agencies will do is they'll, if they have any of those salary savings left over, they'll use those just to pay for operating expenses somewhere else. There's a little of that that we see here as well. I think the biggest thing that eats up that salary savings is overtime.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Does someone else want to say something?
No, go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. Thank you for that explanation. That was my main point, is obviously being so shorthanded, crime rate, that's not where we want it to be at the moment. It, it's going to burn out the existing officers, and I want to make sure that, you know, if they're going to be working additional hours, that obviously they're fairly compensated. But recruitment's a big challenge and a big issue, and I think that's, you know, objective number one, and it's good to hear that you're looking to make some changes or reevaluate things within your department, because I think that's necessary. One thing about that too, I often wonder, sometimes if, if they're unfilled positions, not just in the police department but all city positions, sometimes I always wonder, what's the best policy? If we need to create something within City Hall so that, you know, when we fill posi, when we budget money during the budget process to fill a position, it should go towards personnel expenses primarily, and then anything over and above that, then there's got to be, is there a way that we can vote on that at a future council meeting? Like, because I could see that there could be some abuses, and I don't mean this towards the chief or the police or any department head in general, but there could be, you know, adding positions in the city budget and then halfway through the year, three quarters through the year, it's not filled, and then the department head could then use that for other things that we did not approve at the city budget process. I know that's not what the chief was implying, but my, my, my whole point of saying all this is that if we budget money for the police department, I would hate for the money not to be used in the police department. Ideally, it should go towards staffing, I know that, overtime, I know that, but anything over and above what they actually spend, hopefully, it could go towards equipment or some bigger purchase item, but maybe that's an ethical thing within City Hall to figure out how we, we allocate that. I just needed to state that, there's no one that needs to make a comment to that, but, but the chief answered my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would just say briefly that there are some, some legal guardrails that are built in, you know, that are required any expense over twenty-five thousand. Obviously, it's something that needs to come through council, so, you know, I think there are those appropriate safeguards in place to prevent what, what you were discussing. Alder, Alder Dorf?
And I just have to say, and perhaps Director Ellenbecker wants to explain this more, but any budgets that I've worked in with huge budgets, if something is in the, well, for, for property or for, for vehicles or whatever, you can't just take it and then pay someone with it, or you can't take a salary and then you can just automatically use it for an item. Director Ellenbecker, do you want to explain how budgets work and how they're a little stricter than that? Maybe in your own family you can, but not in the city.
Right. Based, based on state statute, we do have to approve, we approve budget, the, whatever level you approve your budget at, that's how you would have to go ahead and spend it. So that gives some flexibility within departments. So yes, if a department, let's say police, is favorable, they would have the option of trying to spend it within their, within, at budget at the end of the year, or they have to explain why they didn't come in at budget. We have made it pretty clear that, you know, just because you're favorable in, in salaries, that they can't just use it for, let's say, office supplies or some other line item below. Because in many cases, if there is a savings in, let's say, a police or fire, typically it ends up being offset by overtime. Other departments, as in an administrative department, which is smaller and you have a position that's open for a couple of months, that typically will just run favorable, and we do not, we do not typically allow them to spend other lines of below salaries and wages to offset that favorability. Also have it built in, remember, employee turnover. So we know that there's going to be some positions that aren't going to be filled on a normal basis. On average, it does go over a million dollars. I do believe every year we have been trying to bring that down. I think this year, we have it in at about seven hundred thousand, so if we had more positions than that, again, overall would be favorable. We strongly recommend and prefer not, we don't allow them to spend on other line items except in the salaries and wages, so those favorabilities then would fall to the bottom line at the end of the year. We would come in under budget, and then that would increase our fund balance.
Thanks, Director. Any other comments on the police budget? Alder Johnson, no, Alder Galvin, then Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would hope that, I would ask that the chief and his staff, as you're putting together or looking at your staffing needs and where there need to be changes and that, that you include the Alders in that conversation. A lot of us have a lot of conversations with a lot of constituents about what the citizens see that are needed in this community. And I know it's easy that when you're a police officer to think that you know everything that's going on and, and what is a priority and what needs to be taken care of, but it's when you start listening to the people and see what their real concerns are, that is the reality. If their concern is, is speeding, then that's the reality. If their concern is shootings or drug gangs, whatever, then that's the reality. So I, I would ask that you please consider talking with us and getting some information from us, and I would also suggest that as you're looking at the CSOs and the CSIs, at one time, our department did have a rather robust cadet program in which at-will employees that worked full-time, they received benefits. That's where we hired our cadre of officers out of for the most part, and it, they were at-will employees, so if something wasn't going to work out, they were gone. And they did a lot of the things, such as picking up stray dogs, park patrol, bicycle enforcement, a lot of things we don't want, see anymore in this community, and a lot of things that the citizens are asking for. They want safe parks, they want safe roadways, and so these were all things that used to be done that are no longer done anymore due to, I guess, budget constraints. But I mean, if, if we're going to shoot for the stars, let's, let's include all of that in, in that, that search, and hopefully, you're able to come up with a plan that will help this department grow and do the job that the citizens are looking forward to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Chief, do you have any, any comments in response to that?
Not really. I mean, I think that's very well put. That's community policing in a nutshell.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Alder Johnson, then Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Alder Galvin made a very good point, and that is, you know, sometimes facts and reality don't always align, and, and reality is, is critically important. And so to that end, I think, you know, one of the things I really want us to encourage, and this goes back to the conversation we're having before about the chief of staff position, is understanding the importance of communication around issues of importance to our community. And so something that was, was brought up was, you know, crime perhaps not being at a level that we would want. So let's talk about facts, and I got to point to this, Mayor.
Okay. I assume so.
Property crime in the city of Green Bay is held flat from this year compared to net, compared to last year. Compared to our five-year average, property crime is down nineteen percent. Okay? Let's talk about facts. Violent crime in the city of Green Bay is down nine percent compared to last year, down three percent from our five-year average. Those are facts. That's data. However, I think the issue that we see here in our community is that there are certain components within that that are on the rise, and those, those two things, of course, that I've been hearing a lot about from constituents that I know we've talked a lot about in, in various committees. Number one is traffic, number two is shots fired. So Chief, I asked you this question at Finance and Personnel, and I think you gave me a good answer, but I'm going to ask it of you again here today. Does the police department currently have sufficient enough resources budgeted to tackle those two issues and come up with some reasonable solutions?
Chief?
And the short answer is, well, it's, it's hard to say, only because we have, we are budgeted for a hundred and eighty-seven police officers, but we never have a hundred and eighty-seven fully deployable police officers. So we may very well be budgeted appropriately for, to cover all of these issues. The problem is all of the vacancies that we have right now, and I like to say, there are two kinds of staffing shortage in police departments. There's the kind where you just don't have enough budgeted positions for the body of work that needs to get done. It's hard for us to say if we're at that situation because we have also the second kind of staffing shortage, which is where you have too many vacancies relative to the positions that you have, and you're having difficulty filling them. So, and, and vacancies, we have vacancies where there's nobody in the position, and then there are people in the training pipeline that takes at least a year who aren't fully deployable. We are looking at specifically with regard to traffic safety and gun violence. We are looking at whether we have adequate resources dedicated to those specific issues. The, the other thing that is not mentioned, though, when we talk about the body of work that the police department is responsible for, crime rates are one element of that, but calls for service are really what tie up your resources, whether those calls are for criminal issues, whether they're for welfare checks, animal issues, or all the things that people call the police for. And that's where we're, we're at a bit of a loss when it comes to having really good data to see how much discretionary time do our patrol officers have given the call load that they're experiencing? I have anecdotal data with officers who tell me they're going from call to call to call to call, and they have difficulty doing self-initiated things like proactive traffic work, traffic stops for, for traffic safety purposes. But that's one of the things that we really need to get better at, is tracking that data of how our officers are spending their time based on call load. Long answer to a very simple question. I apologize for that, but that's what I'm, what I'm finding as I get into these issues.
Thanks, Chief. Alder Johnson?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This might be more of a general comment. I think with budget times, I find that getting together with the department heads ahead of time is very helpful. They, they encourage it, so I've done that for a number of folks, and I know other Alders have done that as well. You know, it's just a matter of communication, so we need to reach out to the departments, talk to them. Like I said, this is just a general comment, but I find that it, it helps me tremendously, and then I can relate that to the citizenry at large. So I appreciate even Chief Davis, the comments that he's made. You know, it makes it a lot easier to kind of deal with things as we move forward, but it's a general comment, and I think we, we need to all do that.
Yep. Thanks, Alder. Point well made. Enter Alder Johnson and Alder Stevens? No, Alder, Alder Galvin, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll, I'll back up Chief Davis on that. It's, it's call volume. I mean, and, and I think people have to understand that the zones, okay, the city's divided into zones, shifts, all that other stuff, that hasn't really been added to since nineteen eighty. It's, it's other things like gang officers, CPs, community police officers, that's where we've added the staff. But the, the officer, the young lady or the young man you see on the street day in and day out, that hasn't really increased in over thirty years. And they're the ones that we're expecting to handle all those calls initially before they get turned over to someone else. And as the chief told us before, I mean, they're down about nine positions. Four of those are detectives. Those are the guys that are supposed to be investigating a lot of these crimes out there. And so a lot has been put onto their shoulders. a lot of these crimes out there. And so a lot has been put onto the shoulders of those men and women we see in the black and white cars every day to handle the 80,000, 50,000 calls for service. But I, you know, I think the chief needs time to analyze and look at this. I know we're kind of getting on his back a little bit. But he's going to need that time to do the proper analysis, to come up with the figures that he's going to need to present to us. Thank you.
So, good discussion. Entertained a motion to approve item 14? Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. We are now to item five, and that is to approve the use of a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue calculation to fund one-time building repairs, new equipment or repairs in the 2022 budget. Before we get into this, maybe Director Allenbacher, if you could just kind of give us a status update of where things stand.
All right. Currently, we are at, updating the spreadsheet here. We are at a mil rate of $9.80. Last year, we were at 972. So it's an eight cent mil rate increase, and it's at about a point seven six percent increase.
Okay. Thanks, Director.
And that is still currently using 655,000 one-time money.
Right.
Just because the question may come up, if we were to reduce that 655 by 137,000, which we take it down to 518, we'd be exactly at a 1%, which is what was originally proposed. But those are just some of your options.
Okay. Thanks, Director. Comments on this item five? Motion to approve made by Alder Vanderly, seconded by Alder Dorf. Discussion on that? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I oppose this at the committee level. I'm going to oppose it here, too. And it's really predicated on this conversation that we've had about the spending of one-time money to really balance a budget. And, you know, as I'm looking at some of the items that are allocated here, you know, within this equipment list, these are things that we use on a regular basis. Things like a vibrating plate compactor or repairing of a swimming pool slide, website conversions, right? These are all things that we need to pay for on a regular basis. When I look at the ARPA funds, I see, I really see this as this one-time opportunity for us to do truly something impactful for our community, to address longstanding concerns that we simply cannot address through our annual operating budget. These are annual operating budget expenses. And so I think if these are things that we need to spend money on to make the city operate, we ought to find a way to have the city at the local level fund these expenses. So I'm against the motion because I don't want to see us utilize one-time ARPA funds in this manner. If there were things on this list that we could say, hey, you know what, this is directly related to COVID, and this is the only reason that we are spending this money is because of COVID, I would perhaps have a different view on it. But given the list of things and the way that I'm evaluating their uses, I just, I'm not seeing that. So that's why I'm going to oppose this particular motion.
Alder Johnson, appreciate those comments. And just real briefly, I think we both feel the same way about one-time money. But this is a little bit unique in the sense that these are directed towards one-time funds or one-time repairs or things of that sort or equipment additions. You know, we can certainly debate, you know, how one-time they are. But I do think we're also on a little bit of a glide path with, in the sense that some of our tids are going to be closing in the future. This ARPA money is at our disposal to be used until 2026, if we so choose. The final point that I would make is this is 2.7% of 23.7 million. So that's a very, very small subset of that overall dollar. And obviously, you know, would not have presented it if I didn't support it, but just wanted to make those points. Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to hope everybody's got their thinking caps on, because I agree with Alder Johnson. We should be able to come up with really something significant and neat with this money. So I'm looking to you, Alder Johnson, put that thinking cap on.
Oh, he's already talking to me. We've got some ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Dorf?
And I agree with you, too. And I think with the about 23 million that we have left, we can come up with some of those ideas. This helps us so we don't need to raise the levy anymore. And I think that our citizens will appreciate not having higher taxes. These are basically items that don't come up every single year. They're not year after year after year. We have to fix them. They're one-time fixes until they need to be fixed again, and then maybe we can spread it out a little more. So I think we have a lot of money left from ARPA funds to do the magical and wonderful things that Alder Johnson and a lot of us believe we can do. I would like to see our levy stay as low as it is and use these funds so we don't need to raise that levy. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional comments? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a point of clarification. By no means am I suggesting in my opposition to the use of ARPA funds that I'm advocating for a levy increase. I think oftentimes when we have these conversations, we overlook the fact that raising the levy is not our only option. Expense reduction is also an option.
I don't think any of those options were offered, however. So with that, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. So now we're on to resolutions. And I would entertain a motion to take up items one and two. Motion has been made to suspend the rules, take up items one and two with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, we will use the board on items one and two. Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just give me a moment. Thank you, Alder. You may vote.
And those are adopted unanimously, 12-0, on to Resolution Three, adopting the 2022 budget and tax levy.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be okay if I would show an electronic version or like share my screen? Because typically in the past, we would always, I have the revised resolution available. We, in the past, we would run down, make a copy, get everyone a copy on their desk. If I could show it electronically, would that be allowed?
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. I did get your message, Director Allenbacher. So just give me a moment to make you a co-host.
And just for recap, for anyone who, from the resolution to what I'm going to show now, the original draft one to the one that we're showing, the levy did go up 15,093, and that was the two changes for the increase of 1680 to common counsel and 13,413 for forestry. Otherwise, the rest of the resolution has stayed the same.
Okay. So there's a motion made to adopt that revised resolution made by Alder Dorf and seconded by Alder Scannell. Discussion on the revised resolution? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Are you able to see the resolution now?
Yep.
Yes. And was there any further discussion? Otherwise, the vote is already started.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is this the final vote on the budget?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. I just had one comment. I just have one more comment.
All right. The vote is in progress, so maybe just give us a sec.
Thank you, Your Honor. I need, there's one person who's not voted.
That's me.
Ah, yes. So.
I can comment after. That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, we'll definitely allow that.
So then, Alder, can you vote? Or, thank you. Okay. And here's your displayed vote.
And that is.
It's 10 to 2.
10 to 2. Thank you, clerk. And your final comment, Alder Wery?
Thanks. I was just going to say, I haven't voted for a budget in probably six years. So this one, I think you did a reasonable job of keeping that increase pretty low and not disrupting. And we put some things back together that were important. So happy to vote for this one.
Thanks, Alder. Appreciate the comments. On to petitions and communications. Oh, boy. Two in a row for Alder Scannell. Adjournment. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.